Well, hello ladies, how are we doing today? I'm glad to see you and thank you for coming out for another one of our sessions. I know nobody else can see you, but I can see you and you all look lovely. So here's what we're going to be doing today. I'm pretty sure you can all see my screen, which means you all see that there's a list of two words or there's a list of words. So what you're going to do is when it's your turn, you're going to choose a number. So if you chose number one, for example, what you would do is you would tell me what the definition of unilateral is. Then you're going to tell me what the definition of litoral or um. And I'd like litoral. I like to say it that way. That's what I'm going to say. So or litoral. And then you're going to connect the two. Somehow connect the two things to real estate. Because I promise there is a connection. It may not look like there's one, but I promise there is one. And if you don't know a definition or a connection, then we are all here to help you. So without further ado, because Kiana, you gave us some great news earlier. I will give you the honor of choosing the first number here, though, is my one caveat to everybody. You cannot choose a number that is visible on the screen. Because that's cheating. You already know what the two words are. You can choose something. You had some control over that. So for you, you can choose between seven and what seventy-five. So I've added some from the last ones. Any number between seven and seventy-five. And then once you go, the next person who goes, you'll be able to choose any numbers except the ones that are on the screen. So give me a thumbs up if that makes sense, guys. We're good. Awesome. All right. So Kiana, go for it. What you got? What's your number?
Okay, Candace, I think I'm gonna go at number twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. I need to get some sound effect like a wheel rolling or something. Like, you know, in um Price is Right, when they spin the big wheel.
Yeah.
Ooh, twenty-seven, you have the word mill and you have the word factor. What do you know? Let's start with mill. What do you know about mill or mills?
So this is a perfect way to start it because this is one of the two of the terms actually that I need to study up on. Um, so I'll take a guess. I'm gonna guess that a meal is something that we see in terms of a township.
Okay, so we'll stop there. That's not necessarily what has to do with the mill. Although it does, that's a good like kinda sounds like township rectangular survey system, but no. Does anybody know what a mill is? Anybody? Oh, you picked a good one, Kiana.
Yeah, I was gonna say something similar to what she said, but.
Okay, two, all right. What if I told you it had something to do with taxes? Does that spark any kind of memory for anybody?
Is it possible that it's? And again, I'm guessing here, but is it possible that the meal is like per tax rate?
It is. Another term for it is a millage rate. It's a millage rate. So now that I've said that, Kiana, what are you thinking? Oh, and Ashley, she's in the chat. I know your volume, but she said something to do with a thousand. She is a hundred percent right. It is something to do with a thousand. Anybody? All right. Well, usually I wasn't planning on doing any math, but let's talk about it. Let's swing that over to the side. You know that we pay taxes and they're annual. Now, every state's different as to when they're due, blah, blah, blah. But there's two ways to come up with a tax value. First of all, you know, you have an assessed value. And our assessed, our assessed value comes from the tax assessor. And they're the one that says, okay, as far as taxes are concerned, your property is worth X. It doesn't always have to be the same as the market value. They can be different. But they could tell you that your assessed value is, let's do, I don't know why I like the number four hundred and twenty-five thousand so much. That could be, I call it the ass value. Giggled, giggled. Yes, that's what I called it. So option number one, option number two. Option number one has to do with one hundred dollars and option number two has to do with mills. And it really doesn't have. You know, it's not a number so much, but you'll get it. When you're doing or you're in a state where they quote your taxes by hundreds, what they'll do is they'll tell you a tax rate. They'll tell you that the tax rate is equal to four dollars per one hundred of the value. So that means for every one hundred that is that your house is worth, you owe them four dollars. So I would take four hundred twenty-five thousand. I would divide it by one hundred and I just do that age old trick like that. And I'd find out there's four, two, five, zero. There are four thousand two hundred and fifty one hundreds in that value. So I'm gonna pay four dollars for each of those. So I hope you have a lot of money because your annual tax bill will be four two fifty times four dollars. Good gosh, yeah, you live New Jersey or New York or 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 someplace. Good googly goo, that's a lot of money. Let me make sure I did that right. Four, two, five, zero times four. Yeah, your tax bill for the year is seventeen thousand dollars. Now, I just made up numbers off the top of my head. Usually taxes aren't that high unless you're living in like a million dollar house in most areas, but you get the point, correct? If I was in my, like in my state, in my area, I would say a tax rate is usually more like a dollar forty-two per one hundred. And that means it would be more like five, two, five, zero times a dollar forty-two, which would be. That seems more reasonable, six thousand dollars. That's a more realistic one. It's what happens when I come up with numbers on my top of my head. That would be if they quote your taxes per one hundred. If they're quoting your taxes per by mills, they'll say, oh, your house is worth four twenty-five, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And there's a millage rate of, I don't know, seven. What you need to know is that a mill is equal to one tenth of one cent. So if you had a penny, you know how if you had a dime, you could put that into ten pennies?
Yes.
And that's as really as low as it goes in our country. Imagine there was something smaller than a penny. It would take ten mills to make a penny.
Okay, that makes.
So if you, if you put into your calculator and go ahead, ladies, do this for me. Take point oh one and divide it into ten equal pieces. What do you get? And I'm guessing you got point zero, zero, one.
All right.
And do y'all remember in in middle school, not middle school, but elementary school? This was the tenth place. And this was the hundredth place. And this one was the
Thousands.
Thousandth place. So instead of dividing by a hundred where like we did in the other one, mills are about dividing by a thousand. So if I wanted to know the taxes based on mills, I could just take the four twenty-five. I'm gonna divide it by a thousand. So that's gonna give me four hundred and twenty-five. And then I'm gonna do four twenty-five times seven, because that was my amount of mills. So four twenty-five times seven, that is two thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. So I know it's not supposed to be a math lesson today, but I just want it to make sense. Even, does the concept behind it make sense? Yes, ladies?
Yep.
Yes, it does.
Now, here's a little secret. I could do this or I could take seven and divide it by a thousand. And then I could say, oh, let me multiply by four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But when you take, you're gonna get to the same place. Remember, it doesn't matter if what order you do things in, fine. So you can just remember, and I tell people all the time, mill is one, zero, zero, zero. There's four numbers there. Mill has a thousand. So that helps understanding what a mill is, which is great. Who can tell me something about a factor? Who knows what a factor is? That's okay. So the factor, let me start it this way. Because we don't know what it is, and that means you all probably can't connect it. The connection is the number one thousand. That's what they have in common. Would you agree everything we just did right here was about taxes?
Yes.
Well, let's change it up. If we're talking about factors, we're talking about mortgage loans. So if you wanted to buy a house, let's say four hundred and twenty-five thousand was not the sales price, but it was the loan amount. And then the next question, before you buy a house where you need to borrow four hundred and twenty-five thousand, your next question is gonna be, um, how much is my?
Interest.
Well, yes, your interest and your monthly payment. Because interest rates change. How much you can afford this month? That makes sense?
Yeah.
But you are on the right path, Deborah, because when they give you this loan amount, they're gonna take two things. They wanna know how many years you're borrowing it. So it's usually thirty years. And they wanna know the interest rate. So let's say six percent. Is that a question, Ashley? Go for it.
So the mortgage loan is related to factors?
It's related to factors.
Okay, you give me, I guess.
Well, we're gonna get, I'm gonna show you how it's related to factors. So it has to do with mortgage loans because when you have a loan, you wanna know the monthly payment. They have to tell you two pieces of information, thirty years and six percent. They take these two pieces of information and they tell you a factor. Now, I know, and I don't know if you all watched the webinars this week, but this week we talked about in the math one, we talked about amortization tables. And an amortization table, look, y'all got me all over the place. I wasn't expecting to do this one, but I should have been. I like this good number. Do y'all know this amortization chart?
Yep.
Yes.
All of these numbers in there are factors.
Okay.
So we said it was thirty years and six percent. All right, let me use a different color here. Boom. So we said thirty years, that's here, blue, 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 blue. You like my sound effects there. And six percent, that number that you come up with, which in this case is five point nine nine five, five, one. That means you're gonna pay five dollars and ninety-nine cents, I'm rounding, for every one thousand you borrow. It's a rate. Remember when we did taxes, you had a tax rate of four dollars for every one hundred or a rate of seven mills? A factor is a rate of principal and interest payment. You're going to pay five dollars and ninety-nine cents for every one thousand you borrow. This chart is full of factors.
Factors, okay.
It just doesn't feel like it because when you see these charts, they don't put number signs in them. But every single one of these numbers in the chart is, if you borrow for ten years at three percent, you're gonna pay twenty-five cents for every one thousand dollars that you borrowed. There are invisible dollar signs there. Oh, sorry about that. So and my phone should be off. Hmm, my bad. So we're gonna take, do we all get now what a factor is? And now do you see that it connects to a thousand because they're both a thousand? But I'm gonna go ahead and finish that thought for you here. It's gonna be boop. If you had thirty years at six percent, we learned that our factor was five dollars and ninety-nine cents. And that's what you're gonna pay for every one thousand you borrow. That makes sense, yes?
Yes.
So if you're borrowing four hundred and twenty-five thousand, we divide by a thousand to get four twenty-five. And we know we're gonna pay five dollars and ninety-nine cents. So our P I payment.
Two thousand five hundred and forty-five.
Sure, I didn't do it yet. Let's see if you're right.
It's seventy-five.
And times five point nine nine. Five, four, five point seven five. I love it. So not only did we do a vocab question, y'all, we also did a little bit of math. But, and I know some of you all that in here right now may not be in California, but sometimes the California students will ask me, do I have to know how to do the math? No, you don't have to know how to do the math. It's not on your California exam. But the word factor is directly related to math and it's a finance term that you definitely have to understand. So if you understand the term, then you can understand the math. And if you understand the math, you understand the term. So did that clear up some things with factors and mills for y'all?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that was a great number. I love it. So actually, let's make it so nobody can see any of the numbers. Um, Deborah, why don't you go next?
I can't see the questions. It was the very beginning. Um, it was forty-three, was it forty-three? Um, I wouldn't forget. Forty-three thousand five sixty and then across that was five thousand two eighty.
I think that was, that's mean, I'm gonna let you go ahead and skip to it, even though you saw it before.
There it is, number three.
Forty-three, five, sixty and five thousand two hundred and eighty. So can you tell me what forty-three, five, sixty relates to?
That is one acre.
Okay, and what about fifty-two, eighty?
One mile.
Well, I feel like you knew this.
I had it written down fifteen times because I'm not good with numbers, you know, so.
You don't get to choose that number. That is a good review. They are both numbers. There are forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in an acre and five thousand two hundred eighty feet in a mile, which you knew. That is cheating. You gotta choose a number you don't know. It's gotta be between one, between eight and seventy-five.
Ah, eminent domain is cheat.
Nope, you gotta choose the number between eight and seventy-five. Can't be one through seven.
I can't see, I have one through seven.
Yeah, that's the whole point. You can't see it.
Oh, 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 I said pick number eight and go ahead. Can't see number eight. Okay. So um, let's do eminent domain and.
No, no, no. I need you to choose a number between eight and seventy-five randomly.
Oh, oh, okay. I missed that part. Let's just, seventy-five, eleven.
Eleven. You have the word addendum and you have the word amendment.
Okay, uh, addendum is a um, but how, how, an addendum is something that is added onto a contract after the fact. Am I on the right?
Close, then what's an amendment?
Amendment is a written, um, in a written, uh, a written addition that was added to the contract after the fact.
So you kinda said the two things are the same and they're, they're very similar.
They are similar.
Anybody, and that's why they're good words. And I'll tell guy, I'll tell you guys, my commission where I am, they're amazing. And every year they come up with a breakdown of the most missed of the most missed words. I am a popular person today, but it's Friday afternoon. How was I supposed to know? So having said that, our commission goes through every year and says, okay, here are the topics or the questions that a lot of students are missing. And so what we wanna do is go ahead and tell you all as teachers so that you make sure that you teach these concepts to our students. Well, we take a national exam just like you do, and these two words are on that list. It's been on our list before. Students are always messing up amendment and addendum. So you're close, you're very close. Go for it, Ashley.
I feel like an addendum is um, something that is added to what we already established. And amendment is like if I write something out and then I'll place a line through it and initial it. So it's still there, but it's, it's, it's there, but it's not, it's like a correction, but I look at it like it's a line through with my initial on it. And the addendum is actual just adding to what I already have.
Yes, that is a good way to explain it. Here's what I want you all to think about. If I say the lead-based paint addendum, do we know what I'm talking about? Yes? You or like a lead-based paint addendum or the lead-based paint disclosure? It's an addendum to the contract. A lot of us are gonna work in states where we have, um, you know, a pre-made contract and what we do as agents, we fill in the blanks. But maybe you wanna add to this already written contract, oh, about lead-based paint. Or it has to appraise, or I have a house to sell, some kind of, I have a, you know, a contingency sale addendum. An addendum, you're adding to a pre-existing contract. You're adding. Does, does that make sense to everybody? Versus an amendment, Ashley, you hit it right on the head. You're making a change to something that was already contractually agreed upon. So let's say, Ashley, you decide to buy my house. You get it inspected, you get it appraised, and it turns out it doesn't appraise. You were gonna buy it for four twenty-five, but then it only appraises for four hundred. We could amend the sales price to four hundred thousand. We're not adding another four hundred thousand onto the sales price. We're amending something that we already agreed to. Does that help everybody? Yeah?
That's a tricky one, actually, sir.
It is a tricky one, but it's another really good one because that addendum, you can add, you're, you're adding to the contract. You're adding to this, this possibly could be an offer too.
Right, right.
Whereas the amendment is making a change to something you've already agreed upon.
Like the pool cover comes with the house kind of thing?
You said it's what, Deborah?
Like, like something that would be considered personal property, like a pool cover. But obviously it's measured specifically for that pool, so you would include that as real property.
Well, I would say what you're talking about, let's say there's a pool cover and it's personal property. It sounds to me in general, in most states, when the buyer and the buyer's agent writes up an offer, they're just going to say, hey, you know, we don't, let's say they, we want the pool cover. Right, we want the pool cover. You would have added that into the contract. That's not necessarily an addendum. When you think of addendum, think of like contingencies or actual like some agreements, things that you're changing, things that you're agreeing to, like larger scale. All right, you would just be adding that as personal property, adding, you know, this is part of what you're getting. However, if you agreed that this buyer was getting this pool cover and then after the buyer gets the inspections and there's all this work to be done, the buyer and the seller agree, you know what, we're gonna take the pool cover off. They would be amending what they already agreed to, so they'd be amending the terms of the contract.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, Ashley, you did such a wonderful job explaining that. How about you? She's like, I don't know how this is a reward, but you get to choose a number that is not eight through sixteen, but one through seventy-five.
I'm gonna say thirty-six.
Thirty-six, all right. Okay, we got two words here, blockbusting and co-mingling.
All right, so I'm gonna say co-mingling is where you mix your earnest money with like uh, your own.
Yes, it's mixing the monies that should be in a trust account in your own monies. Exactly. What's blockbusting?
I think blockbusting is when I get this mixed up. So I don't know if, I'm sorry, you hit it back down. So I think what, what is happening is the bank is not giving loans, redlining. I can't think of the bank not giving loans for certain areas.
That's redlining. Your, your gut was right that that is redlining. Can anybody help her with blockbusting?
Blockbusting is when you, you tell, knock on somebody's door and says, hey, you wanna move out of this neighborhood because a certain, some, either a certain demographic is moving in or they feel like there's something gonna change that will change the, the appeal of the house. So they tell people to move out instead.
Exactly. And for bonus points, Andrea, can you tell me the other word for blockbusting?
Could it be steering?
Nope, steering's where we take our buyers. So steering, we're putting buyers into a certain neighborhood or avoiding certain neighborhoods. Blockbusting is sellers, when you're getting sellers to sell, you're trying to use a demographic moving in. There's another term for it too.
It's on the tip of my tongue. Um.
I know.
Starts with a P?
Is it puffing?
No, puffing's a good term too.
That's exaggeration.
That's an exaggeration, also the theme of the movie Friday. Panic pedaling.
Panic.
Yeah, or panic selling. Panic pedaling, panic selling, blockbusting, they're all the same thing. So what is the relationship between blockbusting and co-mingling?
They're both illegal.
They are both illegal. Ding, ding, ding. Kind of like, wait, this seems like it's too easy. No, they're both. There you go. I like it. I like it a lot. All right, um, how about Alexis? You go. You pick a number.
Um, I'm gonna go with twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Did you already see twenty-two and knew you wanted it?
No, I didn't.
You've got the bundle of rights and adverse possession.
Okay, so I think the bundle of rights is the rights that a seller has as far as with their land.
Okay, tell me some more.
I can't remember them right now.
Anybody help her?
Deep sea.
Deep sea.
Disposition, enjoyment, encumbrance, possession. And
It's not encumbrance.
No.
Right to enjoy.
Now y'all just going out words with, start with E. It's not eminent domain. What did you say, Deborah?
I said right to enjoy.
The right to, well, she said enjoyment.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
That's okay. So here, I'm gonna show y'all. You all take a screenshot of this.
But C is for the um, oh, what is C? I can't think of it right now.
I'm gonna let y'all take a screenshot of this. This is from, I always tell y'all, you should make a list of stuff. Make your list, but this way, here you go. Take screenshot of that.
Exclusive, that's what it was.
Disposition, enjoyment, exclusive possession, right of control.
Deep sea.
That's how I remember it.
What is deep sea? What is that?
It's just, yeah, I've never heard of that.
Little acronym.
Ah, yeah.
So one of the things I suggest that you all do is like make a list of your acronyms. And you know, there's Irma, there's Pete, there's Pitt, there's Ocean, there's the essential elements of a deed. I mean, think about when you all took the class. Aren't there a ton of acronyms or mnemonic devices? I suggest that you make a list of these. Right? In fact, I suggest that you make five lists. Now, I will say that as a teacher, when you're in my class, I prefer you make these lists yourselves. But if you don't have the time and you can't or something, then you can buy the list from me, but there's five lists, there's a six that I would tell you you wanna make that are really important. Your synonyms. Because what I don't want you to do, and I always use this example, interest-only mortgage could also be called a term loan or a straight loan. I don't want you getting questions wrong because they use the word straight loan and you learned interest only is term loan and now you gotta, do you get what I'm saying there? So as you're studying, make a list of your, your synonyms. Like you could say there's the alienation clause or there's the do-on-sale clause. I know you've heard us say that before. Right? Those are synonyms. Go ahead. Those are synonyms. Go ahead. What's another word for personal property?
Shadow.
Shadow. So I think making a list of your synonyms is helpful.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm interested if, like you said, we don't have time to make this list, where can we access?
I'll send you a link. I'll, I'll send you a link, that's fine.
I'd love to get that one too, yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure you all get it. So then there's your real estate acronyms. Now, because what I would tell you is this is a national list, so your state might have synonyms or acronym, you know, things, or your teacher taught. That I didn't have, but you need your acronyms, and there's a ton of those. And the reason I tell people to do this. Is because what you wanna do is, you know how you only have like twenty minutes, so you can't get into deep studying? This is that thing you hand to somebody else, or you cover up half and go, okay, can I tell myself what are the, you know, what terminates a contract? Fabio, full performance, agreement of the parties, breach, impossibility, performance, oper- um, okay, that says confidentiality, that should say operation of law. I did update that. I just needed to download it, but I called that before. So you've got acronyms. I love this one. Statutes, acts, and laws. There is a statute, act, and law for everything in this dang class. So what I tell people is like, if you get it wrong, or you get a question about the UCC. Nobody, I mean, you have the time, but isn't it easier to go back to your list of what the acts are and catch up on it? Then try to read and find where to, boom, it's right there. Love that. Then I would tell you the other list that you want. This is where this all started, y'all. I had so many people ask me for a list of all the dates and numbers in this class. I was like, no. I don't have a list of all the dates and numbers, they're just in my head. And then I was like, mm-mm. If I take the time to write this down, y'all are gonna pay me for. So this is the list that starts it all, but when you get those questions and they ask you something like, um. How many, you know, how big is a township? And you're like, five miles by five miles? Oh. There's an easy way to go find the six, but then you can find out what that five had to do with. So in my state where I am, five is the number that has to do with timeshares. It's the right to stay there five times in five separate periods, you know, over five years. It is an important number, but you need to know, did you pull the number out of your tush, or is it a number that belongs something, someplace else? Cause I know I'm not crazy when I say. There's a lot of friggin' numbers. Just like there's a lot of word abbreviations. I don't think real estate knows how to use a full term if they tried. Look at that. And then, of course, your math formulas. So again, Kiana, Deborah, I will make sure you get that if you are interested, um, so that you can go with, but. It's, it's lists. And if you think of other things, if you're struggling with something. If you're thinking of, oh, here are the words that go with finance, and I always forget, go with finance. Make a list and study from those lists. Those, the doings of the making of the list helps you make connections to the information. And that's how we learn. We make connections, which is why we are back to doot, doot, doot. Here we go. So Alexis, I think you did that last one, right? We know what bundle of rights is. Who can tell me about adverse possession? Speaking of acronyms, mnemonic devices. What do you know about the bundle of, not the bundle of rights, adverse possession?
It is.
Can you tell me what it is first?
It's when you take something. Or unwillingly taking something.
Unwilling from the other side, yes. So adverse is the possession. I like to think of it like finders keepers, y'all. It's, do y'all have siblings? So let's say that you have siblings and was when you were younger, but in your teenage years. And you find a sweatshirt that's been sitting in the laundry room for like the last three months. You're like, I need a sweatshirt. So you take that sweatshirt, you use that sweatshirt for the next two years. Whose sweatshirt is it now? If somebody leaves a sweatshirt on the floor and your mom's about to get, you're about to get in trouble, who just, whose sweatshirt is it now? Yours. It didn't start as yours, but because you used it, you wore it all the time, you're the one that took care of it. And it was not for just a day, but for years. That sweatshirt now belongs to you. That's adverse possession. So. You need to know what adverse possession, what you need to prove with adverse possession, and that is ocean. You've gotta use that your use, you gotta show that your use was open. So you didn't just wear the sweatshirt under a jacket and never let anybody see it. Like you openly used it, you didn't try to hide it, and that goes along with notorious, which is N. You, people knew, if your dad saw the sweatshirt, he'd be like, you know what, I'm pretty sure I saw Andrea wearing that sweatshirt. Like, it's notorious. People know, that's your sweatshirt. The C is for continuous. The E is for exclusive. But the one that I think is most important is adverse. The use had to be adverse. Nobody could give you permission. So what this means, because we have that A in adverse, you can't rent. Let's say I had a pool house and I was letting Andrea live there. She can't just decide to not pay rent and then stay there for twenty years and then decide it's mine now. She will never make a successful claim for adverse possession because at one point, we gave her permission to use it. This is more like maybe Andrea had inherited fifteen acres in the backwoods of Wyoming, but she doesn't go there all the time. And over the next thirty years, somebody randomly moves in, builds a little hut, they stay there, they start getting mail there. Thirty years later, when Andrea does find out about it, she tries to kick them off. And that person who lived there could be like, um, you know, I think I'm gonna claim this as mine now. And if that person who used it can meet open, continuous, exclusive, adverse, and notorious. The judge might say, sorry, Andrea, this is no longer your land, this is that other person's land. So Ashley, it can be related to squatters, but. Squatters, I, squatters rights is a weird term that can mean different things in different states. Like, some people will use squatters to mean, oh, they'll use it interchangeably with. You're squatting because you had to be, you had the right to be there, your lease ended, and now you won't leave. So even though that's an estate at sufferance, they'll say, oh, well, they're squatting and just staying. So I'm very. I'm very careful about when I say squatters, what exactly I mean. But the overall concept of squatting, yeah, they, they went there, they found a space, they stayed there. And when that C talks about continuous, you're gonna wanna know, this goes back to that list of numbers, in my state. I have to make sure that my students know how many years somebody has to prove that they were there. Was it seven years? Was it twenty-one years? Was it thirty years? Was it forty years? It all depends. It's all about state rules. However, this is what I always tell y'all. It sounds amazing. Please don't get a license and decide to tell people, ooh, you want some free property? If A doesn't happen that often, and B, you need an attorney, you gonna have to prove some stuff. Like, this is one of those. Kinda like the chances of you winning that billion-dollar lottery, cause I don't know if y'all, I tried to win that billion, but I lost.
Well, in California, we have issues with that a lot. People moving to some doctor's. State that he lives in two weeks out of the year, and they try to get him out, and he, and the person that's sitting there living there has more rights than the guy that owns the property.
It is so, you, property rights and things like that can be so. Different in every state, so that's why I'm so careful with the word squatting because. In your state, Deborah, there are rules about that that are different than in California than it may be in New Mexico. Or in Maine. So it's just in general, always. And I will say this to all of you in general, always be really careful with what you tell your clients. Oh, you have the right to do this, or calling it this or that. Always defer. Let me ask my, that's a great question. Let me ask an attorney. Let me ask my broker, cause I, I am too pretty to go to jail. I don't know about y'all. I'm a bit too bougie to be going to jail or getting sued.
Way too bougie.
Right? Okay, so what is our connection? Let's go back here. What is our connection between adverse possession and bundle of rights?
Yeah, possession of the property.
Possession. In the bundle of rights, you get the right to possess, and in your adverse possession, you are possessing the property. Very good, you're living there. Look, great job, and Andrea, perfect. You get to choose our next number. It cannot be eighteen through twenty-five. Or twenty-six, there we go. Can't be eighteen through twenty-six.
Let's go back to the top. Let's go to six.
Let's go to six. Eminent domain and a sheet.
Oh, gosh, okay. Um, eminent domain is when. The state can take your property.
Why can they take your property?
Because. They can.
Cause I said so. Anybody?
Yeah, thanks, Ashley. Especially it's cause the, like, they're building. A highway that's gonna be beneficial to the whole area versus just.
It's when the government goes ahead and they say, hey, we're gonna have to take your property for the good of the public. But what do they also have to do if they take your property?
They have to pay you or like reimburse you somehow.
Pay you, reimburse you somehow, great. And we know the power is eminent domain. What do we call the action? When they actually go ahead and take that. Start with a C. Condemnation, hey, Kiana, yeah, condemnation. Alright.
Uh, it's cheat is when, um. Somebody.
Somebody.
What happens when you die and you don't have a hair, uh.
An heir?
A hair, yeah.
If you die intestate, what's it mean to die intestate?
You don't have, uh, a will or anybody who's taking over for your property.
Perfect. You die intestate, you have no will, and you don't have any heirs. Then the property doesn't just sit there getting, um. It goes to the state.
Yeah, and then. So then they cheat it, so the, the way these two are connected is that. The state still ends up getting your property one way or the other.
You know, that was not what I was thinking, but you were absolutely hundred percent correct. Wait, yes, that's exactly what I wanted you to say. Sure, it was. I was gonna say they're both powers of government. But your answer is good too. That is two of the four powers of government. Can anybody tell me what the other two are?
Police tower.
Is that the P?
It is P. See, we use a lot of acronyms in this class, don't we? Police power, eminent domain, what's the T stand for? Taxation and a sheet. Nice. Alright, guys, we're gonna do one more. I'm gonna choose a number. I'm gonna stay away from the lower numbers, cause that's where you all stay. In fact, I'm gonna do one of the new ones. I'm gonna slide over here. So between fifty and seventy-five, I'm gonna go with sixty-one. Ooh, okay.
Secondary.
Secondary mortgage market and flood insurance. Is that a no? Like, I don't even know what it means, or how are those connected?
Secondary mortgage market is when. Your loan gets sold to some, to another company or like another. Person, thing, entity.
Okay, so let's stop there, before we go to flood insurance. She's absolutely right. There's the primary mortgage market and the secondary mortgage market, right, guys? And the primary mortgage market is who makes the loan. And she's absolutely correct that it's one of the, the groups in the secondary mortgage park, market that can buy it. Fannie Mae, Jenny Mae, Freddie Mac, that sounds familiar? Alright, so that's our secondary mortgage market. What do you know about flood insurance?
You have to have that as part of your package when you're getting. A loan for, but I wanna say it's only for certain loans, though.
Only for certain loans, which loans?
I'm taking a guess, cause I can't remember, but I think it's FHA.
So I think what you're thinking of is FHA, but what you're wanting to think of is FEMA.
Yes.
We know that FEMA has those flood maps, right? And if your property is in a flood zone, then there's a pretty good chance that you're gonna have to get flood insurance. In order to get that loan. So that's flood insurance. And how are they related?
They both deal with your house, so you have the, and they both cost money.
Well, the, the secondary mortgage market's not gonna cost you any money, but they are both related to mortgages. So the secondary mortgage market is when your mortgage is, you know, sold. And it's not gonna, remember, when they, when your bank, if you're with Wells Fargo, if they sell your loan to, to Fannie Mae, it doesn't change the terms of your mortgage. You still have thirty years, six and a half percent, that doesn't change. It's just who's getting all that interest is changing. They bought the loan from Wells Fargo. Flood insurance is related to the mortgage because a lot of mortgage banks are not going to give you. A mortgage if you don't get the flood insurance, if you're in a flood plain. So it's both related to mortgages. Alright, guys, that's it. Did this help?
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much.
One of the next one, one of the next one.
Um, you know, I didn't have, I have one more today, and then I didn't have any schedule, but I'll see if. Um, and I told the other group, if people are watching these and they find them helpful, then I totally don't mind doing these again, cause they're fun. And if it means it helps people study, if they're watching it on, on, um. Uh, what do you call that thing? YouTube, then, hey, I, I could do this all day. For me, it's just, it's just fun. Such. An education nerd, such a nerd.
So thank you very much.
Oh, you are very welcome. I'll make sure that what I'll do is I'm gonna send you all an email. About, um, the link to watch this recording, but I'll also go ahead and send you in that email. The link, if you're interested in those lists, and then if somebody's watching later, if they're interested, for those people in the future, it'll also be in the chat. Um, not the chat, but the, you know, the comments for you. But, oh, I'm great, thank you. You wish you'd have this beforehand? What we have it now, we're gonna help people later. Oh, Alexis, what's your question?
So I have two questions. My first question is, um, can we join the next one? I think you said it's at six.
I didn't wanna make it huge, but like today, we had somebody not show up, so if somebody doesn't show up, I wouldn't mind. So if what you all wanna do, and I don't mind you. Cheat the system. If you all wanna show up at six oh three. And if, as long as I don't have like twenty people, then I don't mind if you stay, but if, do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So there's a good chance somebody won't show up for the six, so if you wanna double up, then you all are more than welcome to, cause you all did such a good job. It's the same link, there's a little secret. So if you wanna show up at like six oh three, six oh four to see, you know, who doesn't show up, cause if. If I had said that to one or two people before, we would have been fine for this session. So we'll see. Plus, it's a Friday at six. There's gonna be somebody who decided to skip this. And so I'd rather help those who wanna be helped. So yeah, that's fine.
So my other question was, um, can we pay for sessions or you don't allow?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, I do one-on-one tutoring through Prep Agent. So I'll make sure that you get my link. I love doing one-on-one tutorings with people. Here is my one thing. You've gotta tell me, like, people say, what do we do during a, um, a tutoring session? Well, I look at my tutoring sessions in two ways. There's two big things I can help with. One is knowledge. Like, if you come to me and you're like, oh, I just need to help passing. Don't get me wrong, I appreciate that setup, but with what? You gotta narrow it down for me. People are like, can you help me with fine? Well, okay, I can help you, but you gotta narrow it down. So I think it's a best, a better use of your time. If you're coming for knowledge, say, hey, Candace, here are some vocab words. Here are some topics, or say, what I want is, can you help me better understand? Like. Have some idea of what you wanna talk about, what knowledge you need from me. If it's math problems. One of the things I love that people do when they come to one-on-one tutoring sessions is. Take screenshots of problems or questions that you have. So if you're doing Prep Agent, and you don't understand why the answer is what it is, do that. So that we can be like, oh, let's hit this vocab word. Let's hit this question. Let's hit this math problem. Let's talk about this topic. You're gonna get more out of the hour from me. That's the first way, like, people will use me in a tutoring session. The second way to use me in a tutoring session is about how to study, cause that's what I'm passionate about. I see so many students struggling to pass this exam, and I am appalled. No offense, public education system, but when was the last time somebody taught you how to study? We basically throw a book at you, we give you all this information, and then we're like, learn it at a very high level in a short amount of time. That's crazy talk. So there's different things. I like helping people either figure out a study plan. Or help them figure out some of the different ways they can study. Maybe you need help taking notes, like. Having a plan, a lot of people will buy special, I bought this book, I bought these questions, I did. having a plan, a lot of people will buy special, I bought this book, I bought these questions, I did this, this and this, you have all these materials. And now what, having the materials is only twenty percent of it. Do you know how to use the materials in order to study effectively? Now that's my passion, I can talk all day about how to study effectively, and then I even have a class on how to study, like how does it work in your brain? So, yes, to answer all that is yes, I do tutor, see you got me on my tutoring. You just have to decide before you come, or once you make it, are you needing help with the studying, are you needing help with the materials? And if it's the materials, it's better if you narrow it down so that we're not wasting your time, me teaching you stuff you already know. We're focusing on the stuff you don't know. Make sense guys?
When is your next study session, cuz I didn't see any on the Prep Agent, like it was, I didn't see your name down there for a while, or is it, do you have your own separate session?
So there's, when it comes to Prep Agent, there's different things, like what I'm doing here, I'm, I've opened it up to people on the Prep Agent webinar because I know you all cared enough to be a part of Prep Agent, so that you wanted to study. But Prep Agent necessarily isn't related to this, I just wanted to help Prep Agent students and other students that need it. Um, when you're on Prep Agent, we sometimes have our daily webinars. Which is, you know, I usually do mine Tuesdays and Wednesdays about six, but sometimes I'll do earlier or later, that's eastern. Um, and then there's Maria and Stu, and then we also do our crash courses. And those can vary, so like tomorrow, today's Friday, yes, so tomorrow Maria's teaching the finance crash course. I did the finance crash course before that, and then I think Stu is doing the next national crash course. So those are courses that you have to pay extra for, but I think they're very helpful. So like I did my national crash course a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, you know, we were there for what, five and a half hours, weren't we?
It was good, I was like, oh my god, I wish I would've, I wish I would've found her a long time ago.
We had a good crash course.
Yeah, it was good.
Oh yeah, just go ahead, I'll make sure you get that information too, a one-on-one, so since you did the crash course, you will now have some ideas like Candace. You, can we dig a little deeper into the difference between deed of trust and a mortgage? So you have that, but I love the the all-over national crash course, cuz we went over everything, we did a little bit of everything. But if you're struggling in finance, or let's say contracts, so many students struggle with all that stuff in contracts. Then you can take the contracts crash course, and it's literally, I never do it in four hours, I try. But it's like four and a half, five hours of me talking about contracts, if you are still having questions about contracts after you end of one of those, then I don't know what to tell you, cuz we have hit all of it in depth, ask the questions. So it just depends, when you say, when is the next thing I'm doing, it just depends. Um, but if we know, um, when's the next session like this, you know, I I think let me talk to, I mean, I can't do them all free over time, but I think people would be willing to pay, hey, five dollars, I got ten spaces, everybody throw in five dollars, so Candace can not waste your time and you be able to do it. So let me see if I can get Prep Agent to be on board with that as a part of, or like make it part of your Prep Agent, and if not, then I'll put something together, if you all like this. So I also wanna see how people on, um, YouTube like it, so if you're in the future listening to this in YouTube and you like these sessions, say something, because either I'll do more of them or whatever, but I need to know. Alright, anything else?
Um, I just wanna say before we go, like, I this, I sat in on your math, uh, webinar the other day and it helped me out a lot, like one of the issues, I've actually taken my test and I missed it by nine points. Um, and one of the things that I needed help with was like the factor, and so because we went through that in math and then going through it here. Excellent, thank you for that.
Hey, I love it, I may do, after Thursday or Wednesday's math class, I may do a free math one. But I also have the math videos on my channel, but, so we'll see. Alright, I'm gonna go grab a little food before six, you all are more than welcome, like I said, as long as it's not a huge group, I don't mind. I think some people will not show up for six because it's a Friday at six, but you're welcome to come back, same link. And so I'll either see you later at a webinar or I'll see you later tonight, okay? Everybody from the future, thanks you too ladies, so thank you.